Ladies and gentlemen, are you ready?
We are.
Greetings, welcome to beautiful downtown Dennison at 6:00 PM and welcome to this first meeting of the city council in January of 2025. We're glad to have everyone here and appreciate it. And we have with us tonight Jacob Nichols, who is director of St. Luke's Episcopal Church, to give our invocation. If you'd please stand with us, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the city of Dennison and all of the cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Continue to send upon us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that men and women from all walks of life and with differing talents may find within one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ, our Lord.
Amen.
Thank you, Father. And for our pledge, and tonight we have Ronnie Bates, who's the, who is our director of our public work department. Mr. Ronnie, if you could come lead our pledge for us, please, sir.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Item number two on our agenda regards public comments. I'll read this to you. Citizens may speak on action items listed on the agenda. A request to speak card should be completed and returned to the city clerk upon arrival prior to the council reaching the public comments section of the agenda. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes, otherwise, unless required by law. Comments are related to public hearings below listed will be heard when specific hearing items start. And we have one request to speak card. If it's okay, we'll wait until that item comes up on the agenda. Thank you. Item three is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Redwine, a second by Councilman Thomas, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We move now to section four, the public hearings section of our agenda. I'll call on Mary Tate to come forward, if you don't mind, and we'll hear a report, hold discussion, and conduct a public hearing on the creation of a public improvement district within the corporate limits of the city of Dennison for the creation of Preston Harbor Public Improvement District. Ms. Tate.
Thank you. This public hearing is to consider the creation of the Preston Harbor Public Improvement District. Staff received the petition for creation on November 8th, 2024. A public improvement district is a financing mechanism for the developer to use. The state statute sets forth the process in which the city has to follow for noticing requirements, accepting the petition, and the language that we have to use when we're leading up into this point, into this public hearing. We have satisfied all of those requirements. Its specific boundaries are located within the petition, and in this case, it is the northern portion of the Preston Harbor property, approximately 1,000 acres, which is the northern half. If you recall, the entire property is a little over 3,000 acres. The estimated cost of authorized improvements is capped at $300 million. Those proposed public improvements include, but are not limited to, sidewalk and drainage improvements, roadway improvements, utility relocation, open space and park creation, as well as lighting, landscaping, and signage for the specific boundaries of that property. A petition for dissolution agreement was required to be submitted by the petitioners. That helps to protect the city in the case that the pit is not approved, or if something unforeseen should come up, we have the option to bring that petition before you to dissolve the public improvement district. The requested public improvement district does not have any financial implications for the city. We are not required to participate financially by contributing dollars, nor are we obligated to take on any debt obligations. A pit does add an additional assessment to the purchasers of the property within that specific boundary. So similar to an HOA, if you think about it that way, someone that's coming in to buy a lot is notified during the purchasing and closing document process that they have an HOA fee. A pit assessment is the same exact thing. So the intention is for the developer to get that assessment down through other financing mechanisms, and this is a very complicated deal structure, so there are a lot of moving parts to this. But their intention is to have that pit assessment get to a point where the market will support it. So they don't want to be selling lots that people cannot afford. And that's our job as the city to make sure that we understand that as well and that we guide that process. So there's still a lot of financial analyses that have to take place, but please keep in mind that that assessment is only for the property within that defined boundary. No other citizens outside of the Preston Harbor pit public improvement district will be affected by any type of financial obligation. At this time, I would request that you open the public hearing, please.
Thank you. At this point in the meeting, we will open a public hearing. Those who wish to speak for or against this item can come forward and speak. And so I'll invite whoever wants to come up at this time and say what you have to say. I do have one request from Liberty Johnson. Do you want to, you want to come first, Ms. Johnson?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
I'm ready.
Okay, thank you.
So my name is Liberty Johnson. I actually live at 152 Harbor Road, which is within that 200-foot boundary of where this property in question is. Can't really tell on that graphic. That is one of the requests I did make in a, for lack of better words, because I did ask for documentation through an open records request and got a response on the 11th day of that request with multiple questions, zero answers on the 10 points that I did outline. Did not realize that it is outsourced to a firm in Frisco, so I'm not able to come better prepared. But with the location of our house, there's only two houses on that street. Ours is the unincorporated side, and literally 40 feet away from our driveway is the city of where this 3,000-plus acre community will be going in. There are concerns as far as the roads, which is part of the open records request that I did make. Where is the thoroughfare? Where's the main entry points? What is it going to do to our roads? Are those going to be expanded? These are just areas that a lot of concerns are. But I'm hitting roadblocks every time there are attempts made with the communication with Dennison. So I am interested in knowing if a town hall was ever heard to alleviate some of these concerns. I'm not against progress in a city. I am very concerned about adding, I believe I've heard, 18,000 to a community that only has 26 or so thousand right now. Is the infrastructure going to be prepared in time? What about our schools, the voting districts and such? Kind of disappointing that it seems to be quite a hushed topic, where I'm getting pushed. I'm not getting the open records request within the 10-day deadline. Instead, I get pushed back by somebody that's not even aware that this hearing was taking place with a firm that was hired by the city. So those are some of our concerns. Are there better points of contact that us in the community can reach out to? And that's part of our concerns. So do we have other points of contact to put some of these at ease? Because a lot of the graphics aren't even legible if you look them up online.
All right. Anything else?
No, just looking for answers.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. Are there others who wish to speak in favor of or against the property?
I have a major request to speak.
Okay, all right. If you don't mind, could we please get your name and your address?
My name is Shirley Mann, M-A-N-N. My address is 134 Persimmon. I'm behind Ms. Liberty there. And I guess my, I don't have any information I've asked for, have it been turned down for anything. But honestly, at this point, I'm surprised there's not more information out there that we even have to think about this. My concern is, I know you can lay water. Water, getting water from one point A to B is not a bad thing, not too hard. Sewer is another thing. Is this city prepared to take the sewer strainings that will be in that area and move it to Dennison's treatment plant? Or are y'all going to have to have another one out there? Which I'm okay with. People kind of lose their mind when you say a sewer plant, but some of them, most of them, yours would be clean and okay and could be made very pretty. But I'm still concerned about where anything's going to be located out there. I don't believe anybody knows anything. We have asked around, and like I said, I'm surprised that we don't have a map that can show us anything where residential will be, where the hotel motel whatever will be, any roads, anything. I'm just, I'm more progress. I can't, I've been excited for y'all ever since this started, but I'm beginning to wonder, what am I excited about? What, maybe I'm not excited and don't know it. So that's just my comment. And I would like to know about the sewer treatment plant, the water, all of those infrastructure things that seem to be kind of going on.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for your comments. Others who would like to speak either in favor of or against the project or the proposed pit? All right. If we could, the sewer lines are in the process of being laid to this property, and they will come back into the city and end up at the city's sanitation plant. So that is, that is something that we're presently doing right now. We're also laying water lines to the property. I think we're approximately 50%, maybe, maybe a bit further than that on getting the water there. But for anyone to live there, it's going to take a, an effort by our community to help with the sewer and the water to that area. Please note that they are in the city limits of Dennison. They are already in the city limits of Dennison. And as far as location, I know there's several maps. I don't know if, we probably don't have a map on our website of the proposed or the proposed site as it will be where the hotel is, but it's, that's been in the newspaper several times. And we'll try to get an answer for you on that. As far as our other answers, I would, for you, ma'am, I would like, is there a way that we can help her with some of that information?
Yes, for a large part of it, there is a concept plan attached to the zoning ordinance that exists on this property. But it is a concept. Until final plating and engineering is done, no one knows exactly where the roads will be until all of that work was done. And that work isn't going to be done until they know they have the financial tool available to help finance that work, which is the pit. So for, there's an idea of where they might be. It's not finalized until the final engineering and the engineering work is done.
All right, for her other questions, can, can we invite her to come by the city hall and do the best we can to get her answers?
Yes, we can do that.
As far as the open records, I believe that we have longer than 10 days. Is that right, Julie?
The, there is a 10-day deadline if you're going to submit an open records request to the attorney general to claim an exception to withhold the information. But that deadline does not apply to providing the information. That's just a deadline to ask the AG whether or not you can have permission to withhold the information.
So we're going to do our best to get you your information. And if you'll wait around after the meeting, we'll visit with you and set up a time to do that. Are there other interested parties that want to speak one way or the other on this project? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. And we need your name and address, please, and thank you.
Hi, Gail Augustin. I live at 22 Whispering Oaks in Dennison, which is very far away from where this is. I've been watching it. We've been excited about this because it's good for Dennison. But I also moved to Texas like 22 years ago to Frisco, and so I'm hoping not to live the Frisco event over again. So 18,000 more people. Is that more people actually living, or does that include like the people that'll be in hotels or short-term properties for, you know, fun on the lake? Because what happens with this is 18,000 people come in, and they all have little tiny children, and they have to go to school. We have a limited, I think, school system here in Dennison. Frisco started off with this one, one high school, couple of, now they're up to like eight or nine high schools. The taxes were crazy, bonds. It's, it gets to be something that rolls out of control. I just wanted some assurance from this, this council that do we have a, like a future planning? Is there, is there a plan for all of this? Because you'll find that one comes in and they bring five friends who also want to do the same thing. Before you know it, Frisco went from 43,000 to 98,000 in six years. And that was, that was a disaster. Because the roads weren't built before the people came. The schools weren't built before the people came. It, I just want that, I'm not planning on having any kids. I'm waiting for that. I moved out here for peace and quiet, you know? But I just want to know if there's a plan for that? Is there a committee, like a, like a community, you know, where people of the, of Dennison could join in and, aside from these meetings, to talk about like, is that really the best plan? And then, you know, you have all these communities built and then one strip mall after another, and before you know it, you got 4,300 nail salons, donut shops, right next to every, every, and it's, it really becomes not the place you want to live. So I'd hate to lose what is perfect about Dennison to growth, is all I'm asking.
The city does have a comprehensive plan that addresses the most desired future land uses and undeveloped areas, along with the open space plan, master thoroughfare plan for the roads and utility plan. That's updated at least every five years. And so there is a committee when, when that is done to, to look at that and have the plan. And then in the interim, whenever the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is a group of citizens that are appointed to that commission, whenever there is a request to change any current land use, they review that. And part of their review is, does this comply with the comprehensive plan that we have? The city does have tools to regulate land use, but the city under state law can't prohibit it. That's an Austin state legislator issue. And so we can't just, except in very weird circumstances, you can't tell somebody who owns property, you can't do anything with your property. And so that's why the plans are in place, to try to get it to develop in an orderly way and in a, and in a smart way.
Every five years, where are we at with that? Is it five, four and a half years old, or is it one year old? It's about to start maybe now. Oh, good. I've only lived here a year and a half, but I was, I was hoping for, for there to not be the same thing, like I said, that we lived through before. So interested in just keeping Dennison, like I said, Dennison perfect while you grow it, is all I ask.
Let me add also that you mentioned the school district. And I assure you, we've been working with the school district on this plan since the developers face first came to us. So I meet with school superintendent monthly, and this is part of our discussion every month, is what's coming and what they need to plan for. And they already have some things in mind that they're going to have to do to develop up there, to take this initial property. And you're right, other people with land up there are going to start to develop their plan, and it's going to turn into the same thing. But as Julie said, we can only do so much, and that's develop our five-year plan. And what the residents want to do with their property, we can't control.
Right. Yeah, I understand that.
Ms. Augustine? I also know that the school has an approximately 40-member committee that works on, that is meeting now. We had our first committee meeting with the first school bond. They're considering another bond. And so there is another citizens committee of about 40 people. It's rather broad-based throughout our community. And they, they too are looking at this. And like Mr. Attaberry said, we, we have frequent questions back and forth with, between us to be sure that we are thinking ahead for the schools and doing the very best that we can. So that's, that's through the DISD. And I believe if you go to their website, it'll be right on the front page about their committee meetings and their committee minutes, I think, are all posted. So I believe you can go there and find out some information from the school side.
There's one tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
We have one tomorrow night? Okay.
It's 6:00.
It's 5:00. They changed the time.
Oh, they did? Okay.
Right, right before the snow starts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your concerns. They're very valid. Does anyone else like to speak in favor of or against this, this pit?
I have just an overall quick question. What is the timeline? Like, over what amount of time do we expect from start to completion? Is it three years, five years? Do we have, I know there's a lot of concepts in progress. Do we have an idea?
It's going to depend on sales as much as anything. 10 years, 10 to 15 years, could go 20 years. It just depends on sales and economy.
It could go beyond that, depending on the economy. You know, in a poor economy, home loan mortgage rates go high and people just don't finance. So, and then there, when the rates go lower, there's, there's more availability for mortgages. So that's, that's the million-dollar question. I'm sure these gentlemen would love to know exactly so they could make the exact right decisions at the exact right time. Any, anyone else want to, to make a comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing at this time. And Councilman Massey asked me for a moment to make a comment.
So I moved to Frisco in 2001. 20,000 people. Loved it, you know, didn't have to lock my door. And then they started a growth pattern because city council leadership was very good at recruiting exceptional investment. It was my first experience with meeting city councilors and seeing how forward-thinking they had to be financially to make sure that they could grow their city in an accountable way. And then we participated when, when you started hitting a tipping point of how do we develop our city and are we going to go vertical in development? We're going to have industrial infrastructure lanes? Are we going to have residential components? Are we going to have, where are we going to put all these? And so they would do these little open box at different neighborhoods. And there would be community leaders who would put together these presentations and say, you've got three options. You can have a corridor down the tollway that's going to be your bright shiny, you know, tall infrastructure. You can have an industrial corridor around 380. You can have residential spread out, or you can do a couple of other options. So they got a lot of civic input for that. And ultimately ended up projecting a growth pattern that was going to lead to a quarter million people and 14 high schools that could play district championship without ever having to play anybody outside of Frisco. Or you looked at Allen and said, we got one high school, and we're going to push everybody into that. And if you want to be the quarterback of that team, you're going to go to the NFL, but there's only one quarterback. So we had a lot of input there. And then I found Dennison. I came up here and I found exactly what Frisco was when I got there. What I admired about Dennison, really, was that they had a forward-looking plan that the community had created. Three, 400 people would meet at the Hilton and go, where do we want to be in 10 years, 20 years? And then they had achieved those goals in advance of that deadline. And they got together and did it again. So as a developer myself, and having owned businesses in six or seven states, this is a unique community. And I know, having participated in that 300-person roundtable, that one of the main drivers, the single most important thing, was to make sure that we maintained the culture of Dennison. And that is the art of what we have to do. It's going to be a very challenging thing to have Mayberry exist in a Frisco-growth environment. And make no mistake, we are in one of the fastest-growing markets in the country. And Texas has a, has a pattern of behavior that is common to the entire country, which is you get tired of living next to the shopping center that has the Walmart and the Target, et cetera. So you move 10 miles down the road, and then you incentivize a developer to come do the exact same thing on that highway exit over and over again. So you can see a Walmart every four or five miles throughout every highway in Texas. So I don't know that we can really stop that. What makes us different, I think, is that in a development like this, and I'll speak to, having seen Craig Ranch and McKinney develop, and having experienced here where they had an opportunity for cost savings and revenue production that the city just had a little bit of a disagreement with at the citizen level. And he pulled out of it and said, I'm not interested in having a negative impact in the community. So from a leadership perspective, I have a pretty good feel that what we are getting ready to have is somebody, as a partner, who wants to develop our city in a way that is going to honor the community that we have and not, not eradicate it, like say Mantua down in, in the Van Alstine area, looks like it could do. So I appreciate your concerns because I share them. And that is going to be our primary objective, is to make sure that we don't lose what Dennison's culture is today. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from council? What I would like to remind you is that this is simply a financing tool that will be used to help put in the infrastructure and roads in this community. And it, it is, it contains about 1,000 acres, so that's about one-third of this community will be within a pit. And the residents that live within the pit that choose to live there will be the persons that will actually pay this, the, this financing tool back. Any other questions or comments? All right. Is there a, is there a motion to approve item A in the, in the public hearings?
Mayor, I would move to adopt the resolution establishing the creation of a public improvement district within the corporate limits of the city of Dennison, Texas, for the creation of the Preston Harbor Public Improvement District.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Theresa Adams, a second by Councilman Courtright. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We have another public hearing tonight, item B. I'll call on Mr. Robert Lay to come forward. And we're going to talk about neighborhood services and an unsafe condition of a posted structure at 1927 West Johnson. Mr. Lay?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, everyone as well. This agenda item is regarding the unsafe residents at 1927 West Johnson in Dennison. On December the 19th, 2024, Amy Jones, Bernice Fielder, the estate of Bernice Fielder, David Lee Bell, the estate of David Lee Bell, and William Fielder were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure. given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structures at nineteen twenty-seven West Johnson. The owner has failed to comply with the notice, the structure is unsafe, in accordance with Chapter thirteen, Article seven, Section thirteen dash one fifty-four, parts four, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen of the Dennison Code of Ordinances. On October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, an administrative warrant was executed by co-compliant staff that revealed multiple substandard conditions. The structure was consequently posted as unsafe on October the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. The appraised value of the improvement currently is eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-three dollars. The tax is currently owed on the property total of twenty-six thousand, two hundred sixty dollars, forty cents, and have not been paid since at least twenty thirteen. The water service was last active there in March of twenty twenty-four. There are multiple health and safety violations throughout the property. These include a roof and foundation that are in poor condition, along with multiple health and fire hazards. This property is an attractive nuisance in this neighborhood. Staff is requesting the council declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe conditions of the property are in file in Neighborhood Services Office. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are the residents still living in this house?
No, sir, they are not. The, um, at the time it was posted as unsafe, there were uninvited guests of the house. They have since left when the power and, was shut off to the house.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Lay at the moment?
Do you know if this home, since the taxes hadn't been paid on it since twenty thirteen, is potentially on a auction list for the sheriff's sale?
So the, I talked to the county about this, and they had, have a judgment on the property. I don't know that they've set a date that if they put it on the sheriff auction. If we demolish the house, they would, they would auction off the lot. Uh, we considered that, um, whenever we did our admin search warrant, the building official, myself, the fire marshal, we're all there. It was a house that is in, it's kind of deceiving by pictures, but it was a house that is in much worse condition. Talking to the building official, he would, his statement was, this is not a house, we would want someone to attempt to remodel. So that's why we chose to move forward with demolition.
Any other questions? This is a public meeting, and at this time, we'll open the public meeting for anyone who wants to speak in favor of or against the demolition of nineteen twenty-seven West Johnson. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against? If not, we'll close the public meeting, go back to the council. Any other questions or comments from council? I would entertain a motion for item B of the public hearings from the council.
Mayor, I would move to declare the structure at nineteen twenty-seven West Johnson Street a nuisance and unsafe, to order demolition and authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. At, a motion by Mayor Protem Adams, and a second by Councilman Courtright. Any other questions, comments, discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to number, item five on the agenda for individual consideration. Ms. Fanchan Sterns, if you'd come forward and tell us about the, the contract we need for G I S support. Please, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. This contract is for an audit of the city's G I S processes and procedures. As more opportunities to use G I S tools are available, we need to ensure our program is able to accommodate, uh, things like interactive public dashboards, giving other city divisions the ability to create G I S tools for their team, and education on how to maximize use of software already available. The city has two G I S staff members, and our program has historically focused on traditional G I S roles, like nine-one-one addressing. This project will give staff a cleaner baseline to continue meeting the traditional needs and finding a way to meet updated expectations for things like data collection and presentation. This is actually phase one of a two-phase project. The first phase will focus on, uh, current processes and specific special projects. The next phase will focus on staff training and some data storage recommendations. And I'm present for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sterns? If not, thank you so much. Any questions from council? If not, I'll call for a motion on item A of five.
Mayor, I move to approve contract number two zero two four dash one, zero one five four for fifty-five thousand with Gimli Horn for G I S support, and authorize the interim city manager to execute all related documents.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Massey, a second, a second by Councilman Thorne. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Go to item B, five B. Mr. Tony Kai, who is our president of Dennison Development Alliance, is going to explain a resolution that we are looking to pass for the foreign trade zone.
Honorable Mayor and council, good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to twenty twenty-five. As I think you all know, we are targeting suppliers to the tech industry. And a lot of these suppliers are located all over the world. So to prepare for the possibility of recruiting some of these international suppliers, those suppliers may require foreign trade zone, or a site that's located in foreign trade zone, which is, would be our industrial parks. So we've been working with the D F W F T Z department, because we would be a subzone under the D F W zone. We've been asking, what does it take to reactivate our F T Z? When I came in two thousand, we had an F T Z at Grayson Airport. It was never used, so therefore it was removed, but the process to reinstated is a lot simpler than what it used to be, and that's what we're talking about this evening. We hosted a meeting with the F T Z group from D F W with all the taxing entities, not only just their staff members, but their board members, and went over it in detail. So there's basically two steps that are required to reestablish a foreign trade zone in the City of Dennison. One is the resolution you have before you today. That is just a formality, it does not commit us to anything. If that is passed, and we do have an industry that requires or wants a foreign trade zone, they have to come back to us, which we would run an economic impact analysis on that, and bring it back to the council. So it'll be on a case-by-case basis for any industry that wants to use the foreign trade zone. The reason for the impact analysis is, well, what impact would it have on us financially? It's, what the F T Z does, really, is saves companies and defers these taxes, mostly federal tariffs and custom taxes, in some cases, up to thirty percent. So you can bring the product in and not pay any taxes until it's utilized, basically. So it's a cash flow thing for, for the, for these industries that would use the F T Z. The impact on the community is that that inventory is tax-free as well. As you know, we have an inventory tax in the state of Texas. But this would make it, that particular inventory tax-free. Well, you're not going to lose anything if you don't get the company, right? Because, I mean, you got to get it, it's like any other incentive, it's just a single part of an incentive that you may or may not utilize to attract a certain international company. Now, our mission is, again, is to recruit companies that are thinking about reshoring their operations or, to the U S or building a new plant, specifically a new plant in Dennison. So ultimately, the trade-off would be, well, we're, we're not going to get the inventory tax off a certain inventory, but we're going to get a multimillion-dollar facility that will be taxable, and the jobs that go with it and the economics that go with that. So I would love to answer any questions, I don't want to get too deep into this, but if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them.
So this is a formality. Each industry or customer would be judged individually on their needs, and once, if, if we approve it at the Dennison level, who else has to approve it?
The other taxing entities.
So that would be the City of Sherman, uh, sorry, City of Dennison, the Grayson County, and the school district.
Correct. And they have been sent all this information as well, and it's going to be on their agenda as well.
Okay. Any questions?
So they don't pay tax on the inventory imported, but they would pay tax after the value-add to the end-use product that they sell?
I'm not sure I understand that.
So let's, let's say that they're a supplier to T I. They bring in whatever component it is that they end up selling to T I, and they have to do something to it to, to make it palatable for T I's consumption. The end product that they sell to T I is a taxable?
Not to my, not to my knowledge. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? All right, any comments, discussion? If not, is there a motion on the support letter for the City of Dennison for a foreign trade zone?
Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to provide a foreign trade zone support letter to any business located within the City of Dennison upon request.
My second thought.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Adams, a second by Councilman Redwine to approve, uh, this item. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And so we move to item number six, project updates. Mr. Bates, if you could come up and give us your wisdom.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here to provide a project information update on the public access to Randeau Lake. Public access to Randeau Lake has been allowed in the past, but in compliance with the American Water Infrastructure Act, we as a city are required to conduct a risk resilience assessment for the city, for all of city, all, all of our city water infrastructure and assets over five years, as mandated by Congress in twenty eighteen. Our last assessment was completed in twenty twenty, and we are just now completing the one for twenty-five. I know, it's only been a few days, but we are on top of this one. So we've just completed the one for twenty-five. In both of those, uh, risk and resilience assessments conducted by plumber and associates, it was documented that Randeau Lake should be closed to, uh, public access. And the, uh, lake be categorized as a high-security area because Dennison, because it's Dennison's single source for drinking water. It is our responsibility to meet the requirements of the E P A and the state drinking water programs under the Safe Drink, Drinking Water Act, and we are also required to follow all T C requirements under the permit. The primary concern regarding public access for this potential, or for this, is because the intentional or unintentional, uh, contamination of our drinking water. That is our sole source, only place we get water. We don't have other sources that we can dilute or anything like that. It is only a three-hundred-acre lake, so it doesn't take very much of any kind of anything to get in there and for it to cause a problem. As you know, we have many projects that are ongoing at the water plant and getting water up to the develop, different developments that are going on. So two years ago, we actually did shut temporarily because the construction shut down for public access to these areas, just because there were so many trenches, and those have been out there now, it's like Fire Ant Hill out there, you know, they're just people working everywhere. And we didn't want the, the public to get into, fall into a hole or, or damage and get run over by any equipment, so we stopped it two years ago. The construction is going to continue on, as we know, for at least another three to four years. So we thought that this would be the prime time to come to you and make the suggestion and ask your permission to go ahead and change the ordinance, which is Section eighteen, uh, dash one thirty-eight of the city ordinance, and remove public access to this area and make it a high-security zone. Thank you for your consideration of this, I'm here for any questions, and this is just a project update. This will be on the next council agenda for the actual vote. I'm here for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bates? This is not an action item, so we do not need a, a motion. We thank you for the update, and thank you for all you do for, uh, our source of water, and the water intake structure is still amazing to, to see the construction and how, how that's coming along. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. At this time, there is no other business to come forward, uh, at, sorry, at the moment, we are, the council reserves the right to go into executive session, and that's pursuant to Chapter five-five-one, the Texas Government Code. The council reserves this right to convene in executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law, or to discuss the following, and that will be to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline, or dismissal, or to hear a complaint against a public officer or employee, Section five-five-one dot oh-seven-four. And the item tonight will be a annual review of the interim city manager. So at this time, we'll go into executive session, uh, we'll meet, and then we will reconvene, uh, for the results of that, if any. Okay, trying to keep us out of trouble, yes. Okay, now it's, uh, the time now is eight-twenty-three. We'll adjourn back into our regular session. Uh, we have one item, uh, to come out of executive session, and I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion and propose a four percent raise increase to the base pay for Bobby Attaberry retroactive, uh, back to October one of twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? A second by Mr. Thorne, okay. Motion by, uh, Mayor Protem Adams, and a second by Councilman Thorne. Any other questions, comments, discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, time now, eight-twenty-four. This meeting's adjourned.